Next, more fun. We have the budget update. Dr. Swift?
Thank you, Madam President and trustees. As we normally do during February and March, we are step, as our singer mentioned, saying to us earlier, we are step by step, brick by brick, orienting ourselves to fiscal year 2019-20, budgeting for education in Michigan. And so this evening, we're delighted, Mr. Dimitri and I, to bring you another set of information. Mr. Dimitri reached out yesterday, and we learned that we may find out the governor's proposed budget this next week. And so trustees, we organized this evening to continue our study and moving our conversation forward. And then we will all be paying rapt attention to the governor as she lays out her budget. And then trustees, you know shortly thereafter, we'll hear from both the Senate and the House. And then as we get through March, our plan will begin to become more firm. Our goal, though, has been in the budget update to begin a conversation across Michigan, a conversation that's been simmering to a boil, and we're ready to have it. Trustees, you've received this evening the actual report, because I know printing it at home, for those of you that prefer a paper copy, is hard. So you've got that report. If you don't wish to have a paper copy, I'll take those back and recycle them. We are hoping to have some community forum sessions as we normally do in March, in April, and May. And we're going to invite Dr. Arson to join us and our representatives and senators to join us in this conversation around Michigan education funding. Our goal with this conversation is very straightforward. And I'll start this evening pretty briefly. And then Mr. Dimitri is doing the heavy lift with the numbers this evening. Our goal is to really encourage a broader public awareness, knowledge, engagement, and empowerment about the state of education funding in Michigan. Education funding makes up the largest single component of state budgets and local budgets. And so it's a complicated endeavor. And we find that often the funding for schools is very mysterious, and not a lot of folks truly understand how it works. And because that knowledge is hard to get, and people don't necessarily have it, that power in that knowledge often rests within a very few policymakers. And so our goal is to spread and to develop a wider base of knowledge. Trustees, I am so proud that you all are ready to have this conversation across the state of Michigan. But it's important that we have and share similar information and that we have a deep commitment from our EA partners. We've been in conversation with them. They're going to share with their MEA colleagues across the state. I know you all will be sharing with your trustee colleagues across the state. I'm already plugged into lots of superintendents in the state that are waiting for this to come out. And so our goal is to spread the information. We know that a broader understanding of this knowledge will shape future education finance policies in a different way. It can help inform the media on those policies. It can guide our legislators. I've shared with you that 80% of our legislators are brand-new on the job. And so we can't expect them to come in knowing exactly the next steps. And that's why Mr. Dimitri has received my challenge to populate a menu of possibilities that will help us to speak truth to power and to get some progress made. So we know that this will enable us as advocates. Our goal is that everyone who cares about children and about the quality of public education, about the quality of public education as the cornerstone of our democracy, that everyone will be able, through the resources we're creating, to engage into that conversation, no matter if their capacity is small or great. And so the most productive path forward, we know, begins with recognizing the realities of our current condition. You know Covey refers to that as our brutal facts. And I always love that term, brutal facts. And the idea behind that is you can't move forward until we're clear on exactly where we are. And so we spent time last Wednesday, and this is part two this Wednesday, to really put a frame around our current condition of education funding in Michigan. And here's the number that I hope every trustee remembers from last week, and it is $1. $1 is the difference in our per pupil foundation funding between the school year 2005-06 and this school year 2018-19. Probably folks would see that slide and assume that that is calculated with the difference for inflation. You know, trustees, this is not put through that calculator of CPI. This is actually real dollars. 13 years, $1. That is our current reality in Ann Arbor Public Schools. The point that I wanted to add this evening, and then I'm going to throw it over to Mr. Dimitri, the point I wanted to add is money matters. And trustees, it's not long into this conversation, whether you're engaging with community folks or engaging with elected officials, that someone will say something like, "Well, you know, money's not everything. You can't solve the problem by throwing money at it." We know all of those phrases that come up. And I've done some study this week, and we all care deeply about this topic. Money does matter. And the Baker Book on Educational Inequality is chart after chart, chapter after chapter, showing that inputs are directly related to outputs. You know, what you see is what you get. You get what you pay for, and that is the truth of it. We know that what has occurred over recent years, one of our significant milestones was the economic collapse in 2007-08. And trustees, what we know was that caused a crisis. In a moment when Mr. Dimitri puts up our roller coaster slide, you know I refer to it as our roller coaster slide. And trustees, trustee Baskett in particular, you've lived that, sitting in the seat on the board, and trustees before you all. But the reality is, we hit a new normal. Education Secretary Arne Duncan actually used those words in an address back in 2000, in that time. And he said, "This will be our new normal." Unfortunately, in the recovery that has occurred, and we know that we've been on a recovery trajectory, in that recovery, the children of Michigan have not been included in that process. And we know that the attack on public school funding has been driven by conservative tax policies. And that over this previous decade, this is a simple narrative. Our tax effort in this state has diminished dramatically. And folks don't realize that. In fact, a number-one urban myth on this topic is we pay more in taxes. Schools' budgets are bloated. They're getting more money than they ever have. And that is simply not the truth. And so this slow but steady economic recovery has yielded some turnaround for business and other sectors in our economy. But the children in Michigan have been left out. As we said before, they've fallen to the back of the line in Michigan priorities. So we know how we got here. We understand the process. And I believe we're more powerful, we're smarter, and brighter, and stronger together. But we want to populate this narrative, begin to convene some community conversations, and share this truth so that we can join together with our legislators, offer them some ideas, and support them when they take the hard votes that will be required in order to change this. Governor Whitmer said it in her State of the State address, "This is not an incremental situation, and we won't get out of it through incremental changes." And trustees, spring after spring, February after February, you've seen us stand here and bring you a $50 increase or lauded that it was even. And we were supposed to be happy about that. Those days need to be behind us because the future of Michigan, the future of our children, depends on it. We have shown that adequate funding is within the reach in Michigan. It is very simple, and that is to return to the levels of statewide tax effort that prevailed only a decade ago. Planning how to go about that process is the conversation that we all need to have. And so we are planning now together to convene this conversation. We promised you last week a menu of opportunities. As I shared last night with Executive Committee, when we became aware of the governor's timing to speak to us next week, we decided that we would further this narrative, continue our conversation, and have the governor have the first word. So we'll do that on Tuesday. But we're delighted to preview, just a preview of coming attractions, one strategy. And on each of our strategies, and we suspect at this point we're going to have about 10. I like that number 10 because we talk about being top 10 in 10 years. And I always ask the question, "How can you be top 10 when your funding is at 34th?" There's a ruling congruency there. And so we like the number 10. And we've reached out to a number of professionals around the state. And we're cooking in the kitchen on this menu of opportunities. And we'll be previewing one of those this evening. On each of those, you'll see on the menu that will state clearly what it is, will identify the amount per pupil that it would bring to students across the state. And quite frankly, trustees, we'll highlight what it brings to our students in the Ann Arbor Public Schools because we want to know that answer. And then the third component of that is we'll describe the step that the legislature would need to take in order to make that happen. Now, as we begin to work on this menu, both tonight and again on March 13, by that time, we'll have the governor's budget. So maybe we'll know more at that time. We know that what we need is $3.6 billion. That is what the studies conclude that it would take to get us back to a decent level of funding. And in fact, Dr. Baker recommends that the goals statewide and nationally be to bring states to the national average. He says, "You know, it's really hard for folks to think about being top when they're on the bottom." So what if the goal in every state was to at least get to national average? Trustees, you're not surprised when I share with you we would have a lot of work to do in Michigan to reach the national average. So when we have our conversations, that's one of our talking points. So the $3.6 billion, I have a great math guy who did the math for us, and that equates to approximately...
Couple thousand dollars.
$2,000 per student. So as we have this menu emerge and convene our community conversations, our panels on funding in Michigan and what we can do to support our children, we're going to keep that number 2,000 in mind and look at that menu of opportunities and see how might we, even in a phased process, get to that number 2,000. And so with that, trustees, you know your sources. You have them in front of you. Mr. Dimitri is going to walk us through some numbers. And then we'll be happy to receive your questions. Mr. Dimitri?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Very much, Dr. Swift, for that introduction. So what are we going to do tonight? We're going to go through the highlights of Dr. Arson's research along with his two graduate assistants. And then we will... There was also a study that was done through the Michigan School Finance Research Collaborative. So we'll show a video and some of their recommendations. And we'll show some data on Ann Arbor. And then we'll just talk one of the strategies that... Kind of a preview of what we're going to show in one of the 10 strategies that we'll show in a couple weeks. So David Arson, who's a professor at Michigan State University, but resides here in Ann Arbor. So the highlights of his research is that in the last 15 years, the funding for schools has eroded significantly in the years that he used, it's primarily 2000 to 2015. And the funding for at-risk students, whether they're behind in reading, whatever, if they come from poverty and so forth, their funding has plunged by 60% since 2001. Michigan ranks dead last in revenue growth after adjusting for inflation. And in a few slides, we'll show what that actually meant for our own school district. I know a couple weeks ago, or last week, we showed what it meant for just this year. But we'll do a more cumulative number so you can see the effects. So what's caused this funding shortage in education in Michigan is primarily due to the tax effort. And 74% of it is due to the tax effort. So one of the other highlights is that special education services, he calls it stingy. Or so the state does not fund enough or does not reimburse enough for special education services. And that hurts both the special education services, special education students, and general ed students because the special education services have to be provided. In order for that to be provided, it means the money needs to come from somewhere else if there's not enough money there. So the general ed students or general education is paying for special education services. During, until 2015, Michigan was one of 13 states. According to our research today, there's only 11 states that do not provide state aid for facilities. So now we're one of 11. And in Michigan, there has been a very strong emphasis on choice, whether it's charter schools, whether it's schools of choice, whether it's cyber schools. But all those, the more choices and the way it is designed in Michigan, it promotes a lot of inefficiencies. So everybody gets hurt when there's inefficiencies. So we're going to show a little video of the Michigan School Finance Collaborative, which is... This was a diverse group of business leaders in education experts to change the way Michigan schools are funded. And this was funded through a Kellogg Foundation grant.
When it comes to educating our students and preparing them to compete for jobs, there's no one-size-fits-all solution. Parents and teachers understand that every child is unique. And experts agree, the cookie-cutter way we fund schools is failing our students. Michigan ranks in the bottom 10 states in almost all education measures. That's unacceptable, and it has to change. Fortunately, there's a roadmap to change the broken system, to make it fair so all students can learn, achieve, and succeed. The School Finance Research Collaborative is a statewide bipartisan group of business leaders and education experts from Metro Detroit to the U.P. The collaborative has completed Michigan's first comprehensive school adequacy study. This is a tool used by virtually every state in the nation except Michigan to develop school funding models. Conducted by the top education experts in the country, the study exposed the fundamental lack of fairness in Michigan's current education system. It also determined the true cost of educating a student in Michigan. The study determined that additional resources are needed for special education students, students living in poverty, English language learners, and career and technical education programs. A recent statewide poll of voters showed that 70% believe Michigan schools are underfunded. 67% support a new school funding system that meets all students' needs. And 63% believe Michigan's current school funding system is unfair. So people agree. A new, fairer school funding system is needed that addresses every student's unique and individual learning needs. A new, fairer school funding approach will help ensure every Michigan student has the same opportunity at a good education and the same opportunity to get the skills they need to compete for the jobs of the future. Michigan students are falling behind. But the collaborative has provided the roadmap for change and fairness. Now, it's time for action. Learn more at www.fundmischools.org and find out how you can get involved.
So some of the data that came out of this collaborative was that preschool, there should be preschool for all four-year-olds and for all at-risk three-year-olds. And it should be funded at $14,155. I can assure you, probably half of that right now. The base funding for K-12 students, and this is a little bit more complicated, should be at $9,590. But that does not include transportation. For example, our transportation cost last year was $9 million. So, which is approximately $500 per student. So depending on your transportation cost, there will be additional reimbursements based on your cost. And then the retirement that they took into consideration was only 4.6%. We know our last year, our retirement cost was at 39%. So that number 9590, for example, our payroll last year was close to $130 million. So 39% is close to $50 million. It's around $50 million. So the 9590, in my mind, is not enough. So there should be additional funding for special education students. So there will be additional .63, so approximately $16,000 for students that are not, do not have a severe disability. But if they do have a severe disability, it should be approximately $20,000 per student. They recommend that the... Right now, we have a 90% fall and 10% for the winter. They recommend that it goes to 50-50 or a three-year average, whichever is greater because a lot of school districts are losing students. So they do not want districts that are losing enrollment to be penalized immediately, that it will be hedged over a three-year period. So there will be additional funding for transportation. And then, which we already talked about, the retirement. That there will be guaranteed tax-based program to subsidize infrastructure. Right now, there is no state funding around infrastructure. So they want to help school districts that have a very low tax base, basically. And then all contracts would be, with external entities, will be publicly available on websites for districts and charter schools. And that's primarily for charter schools that have contracts with management for profit companies. And there's no access to them. So they will be made accessible. So last week, we showed this graph, which Dr. Swift mentioned as a roller coaster graph. And you can see that in '05-'06, a foundation was $9,409. And then 13 years later, it's $9,410. And the highest, we were in '08-'09, which was $9,723. So compared to 10 years ago, we're not... We have the same funding without inflation. So our purchasing power has diminished significantly due to inflation. So from 10 years ago, we're actually $313 less than we were 10 years ago as far as funding. And as far... In '05-'06, we're only $1 ahead. But let's see what happens when we factor in inflation by using the Consumer Price Index. So here's the $1 difference. And then the Consumer Price Index, since '05-'06, is at 25.6%. And then as you compound, you know, year after year, it's actually at 28.75. And I'll show that in the next slide, how that works. And then the... So if we're just trying to cover inflation, just inflation, not for any increases and so forth, our foundation needed to be at $12,114 or $2,700 more in order for us to be, to have the same purchasing power that we had in '05-'06. So just for this year, what it would mean, what it means is that we should have received 48, almost $48.5 million more in order to be able to have the same purchasing power. And I've said it before in other board meetings that it's a miracle where we are financially today and be able to offer the programs that you saw tonight and all the other programs that we offer in the school district. And based on this, that we haven't collapsed financially. I wanted to kind of highlight what has actually happened in these last 13 years. So I took every year, I put the Consumer Price Index percentage here. And you see, we never really had a year that was with high inflation. They've all been pretty moderate. And then you see what happens when we include... Then we increase the foundation based on the Consumer's price index. And then over here, we actually, in this column, what the... We're putting what the actual foundation was, our enrollment. And then you see what happened. This is the difference between what it actually, our foundation was, minus the foundation, what it should be with covering just inflation. So you see, like, there was a $91 difference here, which meant we didn't receive a million and a half. Then you see it by year, and you can see how it plays out every year that is getting worse. And this year, it's at $48.5 million. But if you do the 13 years, there's almost $360 million that Ann Arbor Public Schools has not received just to cover inflation, which are staggering, staggering numbers. So I know Dr. Swift wanted you to remember the $1. I want you to remember the $360 million. That is how Ann Arbor Public Schools is getting hurt by those tax cuts and reductions in education funding and also the restrictions that are put on all the education, how they can raise revenue, how they cannot raise revenue. So one of the suggestions that we're going to have in a couple weeks that we're going to talk about is a local enhancement village. So currently, in the law, the only way you can have an enhancement village is it has to be through the ISD. It cannot be through just the local school district. And currently in the law... And currently in the law, an ISD, which is basically on a county-wide basis, can have an enhancement millage up to three mills, up to 20 years. So what happens, the ISD will collect the money for the whole county. And then they would distribute it to each school district based on the number of students they have. And in a few months ago, they changed it that they would give all money also to charter schools. That was not allowed until a few, they changed the law a few months ago. So what we're proposing is that, and I know in our county, in 2009, we tried to have an enhancement millage, and it failed. It passed in Ann Arbor, but in a lot of the other communities surrounding us, they did not vote for it. So our suggestion is to allow local communities, if we want to have an enhancement millage, that the law is changed, that would allow a community like ours in Ann Arbor or any community in the state that would decide that they would want an enhancement millage to be allowed on a local basis versus just on a county-wide basis. What does that mean for Ann Arbor Public Schools? One mill generates approximately $500 per student, $9 million. A tax base is about nine, just a little bit over $9 billion. So we have about 18,000 students. So that would be approximately $500 per student. So statewide, we did the number statewide. And that would generate about $347 million or $236 per student. We're very blessed with a very high tax base. So we're able to raise more money than the average in the state. So I know we have some other suggestions, but we're going to wait for the governor to propose whatever budget she will propose on Tuesday. And we'll see what's, maybe some of our suggestions are already included so we won't have to mention them.
Mr. Dimitri, would you describe? The trustees have the copy of MCL 380.705. We want to equip ourselves with the exact information. And so, Mr. Dimitri pulled this revised school code. In the highlighted portion, Mr. Dimitri would describe one or two ways that this could become law immediately or as soon as the legislature would pass it. And you recall, trustees, that if that millage would have passed in 2009, we would right now be sitting in a very different environment. And yet, we were limited because we couldn't pass it across the county. So walk them through that if you would, and then I'll wrap.
So in the highlighted portion, it basically says a regional enhancement property tax. So instead of regional, it could be regional and local. And then levy by an intermediate school district. So you could say levy by intermediate school district or a local education agency, that would be us. And then everything else can stay the same. Or it could be a completely new, you know, Michigan compiled law that could say that, you know, a local education agency could levy an enhancement millage for three mills up to 20 years. So it's, there's a couple of ways that it could be easily adopted. But the legislature has to propose it. They have to approve it, and then the governor has to sign it.
Thank you, Mr. Dimitri. Another line that we'll develop on our slide is what would this cost at the state level? And I want to be sure and say upfront, Dr. Arsene pointed out in his report, and it also comes up in the Baker book, we would never suggest this as the sole step because it works against equality and equity that we've been working on since 1994. So we would only suggest this as a complement to other steps that certainly our legislature needs to take. This comes down to a narrative that we've been sold in this state and this country, and the narrative is that the cuts have not hurt education, that enterprising educators and leaders will find a way to make it work for children no matter what. We know that's not true. We've damaged education, not only the quality of education for our children, but the quality of talent in educators that we're able to put in front of every child in every classroom. We must invest in educators in order to have a future generation of teachers and leaders who are able to do this work. So when we think about why money matters in Michigan and why now is our moment for this conversation, I always think about the axes, the axes of money and time. And a quote from a Kansas panel of judges when they were weighing on the extreme underfunding that has occurred in that state is perfectly eloquent on this point. They said it this way, "Simply, school opportunities do not repeat themselves. And when the opportunity for formal education passes, for most, it is likely gone." We've said that as educators all along. We often would say, you know, the child doesn't get a second chance at third grade. We have one year to make third grade matter, and we need to do our very best for it. So I would encourage trustees, as we have this discussion, to keep in mind that our due north is children. Children don't have another chance at equality opportunity. This is their moment also.
So Madam President and trustees, I'm believing then that we would continue this discussion with finance. Is that the direction of the board? And then be back on the 13th with a fuller list? And maybe that list gets trimmed by the board with, if there are things you don't want to forward. But we'll do our best to make it, to have as wide of opportunities as we can. So you all have some things to think about. Does that sound all right? Thank you.